I call this meeting to order September 18th, 2019. Franklin Township Order Supervisors Meeting to Order at 7:15. And in attendance, we have Supervisors Morris, Snyder, and Flores. Also in attendance are Harv and Historical Commission Chairman Paul Agassi. We have Township Manager John McGon, Assistant Township Manager Jeff Eastburn, and Secretary Sharon Norris. And there is one member of the public in the audience. I'm happy to see you. Okay, so let's start off with, um, oh, pledge of allegiance. Let's all have our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll start with a public comment. And this is on anything related to the United States of America's agenda. Okay, now if there's anything not on the agenda, take that at the end. Any public comment? Not seeing any public comment. I'll turn it over to Nancy, if you're all right Nancy, to make the first motion.
I make a motion to approve the August 28th, 2019, version two meeting minutes as presented by the Township Secretary.
I'll second that.
Thank you, David. Discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries four to zero. There goes a skip, may I ask you again, next, David?
I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution 2019-15 regarding the disposition of records for the Board of Supervisors meeting of August 28th, 2019, and the Planning Commission meeting of July 11th, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stefan. Any discussion about the disposition of records? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, Stefan?
Okay, sorry. Okay, I make a motion that the Board approved the August Treasurer's report, which includes the following disbursements: The general fund with disbursements and transfers of $87,011.52. Parks and Recreation Fund with disbursements of $7,260.20. The Open Space Fund with disbursements of $6,553.17. The Capital Reserve Fund with disbursements of $93,146.51. The Highway Age Fund with disbursements of $148,285.93. And the Fire Hybrid Fund with disbursements of $580.80, leaving a balance on all funds totaling $961,101.68. Second.
I'll second. Okay, got it.
Who's Nancy?
Nancy.
Nancy, second, okay. Any discussion? Just have one quick question. If like, uh, I'm sure about my reading lessons. These are too powerful. Okay, just real quick, I mean, this is trivial or whatever.
Food fund or page?
It's income, it's, uh, I guess it's 362.41 for building miscellaneous permits. Uh, year-to-date is 34,550, maybe it's 400. I wrote it as 34,558 income. And then zoning, building inspections, 32,484. My question is, is that apples for apples? No, it isn't.
Because I know your head was no.
Okay.
Because, uh, you know, building permits were paid for those when they're issued, okay?
Right, I figured it was a timing.
Yeah, and the inspections and everything, it's billed at a different time, so it's not apples for apples.
Okay, the question would be, is it a timing issue, which it sounds like it is?
It is, yes.
Or is it having raised too much in the way of fees?
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering. Okay.
Because not only do those fees cover the building inspections, they also need to cover the, you know, zoning fees and different things, even part of like the general painting and zoning, that's $21,000.
Yep.
They, that building fee helps cover that too. And so you can see we're still under.
Oh, right, okay, okay, thanks. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nancy, make motion carries five to zero, or four to zero.
Excellent, so Nancy, I'll go back to you. Okay, yeah, so this is the August zoning officer's report. We issued five permits, there were 34 building inspections, building fees collected were $624. Recreation, open space, and impact fees collected were zero. Miscellaneous fees collected were $700. There were four ongoing zoning issues reported. Joan, are there any that you'd like to talk to?
Okay, I'll just go through them. I've heard of 327 Appleton Road, we're still waiting to hear from the judge. And I think Mark, I talked to Mark, and he is going to discuss it with the other attorneys to see if that's the best way. And I need to try and reach out to the judge and say, you know, it's been since March, is something wrong? Did we, you know, forget something or whatever? So, we're still waiting. 1620 London Road, uh, it's, the property has been brought into compliance. It's, he's using it now as just a single-family residence. Uh, so we, um, we requested that the civil complaint be removed because everything was in compliance before Jeff left, so.
So, did he list the update, I mean, or maybe the next edition? Because right now it says the property's not compliant.
Right, well, this was the end of August. August, but it is in compliance. Uh, 7th Boulevard Road, there was a lot of noise coming from one of the properties there. And another resident had sent a letter asking that we try and do something. I mean, it was loud, sports noise, radios.
Was it one-time party thing?
No, 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 it was like, all the time. But they couldn't enjoy even being outside, it was so loud. So, um, the zoning officer sent a letter, and we got an email from the other couple, and they said, we had dinner outside, it was great, it was quiet. So, 1620 Drive, notice violation was sent to that property. There's a business being conducted out of there, and the owner had all of his equipment lined up out on the streets. He took the bed off of the truck, and it was laying in the street. And, you know, I mean, it wasn't even on the, on the, uh, the truck frame. And that area there has a, like, a green island on, in the center, you know, because there's like a curb there. And he had vehicles parked all in that too. So, Jeff sent him a letter and asked him to remove everything, which I believe he did. And he has to apply for a, um, a building, a permit for having a business there. So, that's how.
So, for vehicle maintenance business?
No, I think it's probably some type of contracting that he.
Manscaping.
Manscaping, yeah, yeah. But he had all kinds of equipment parked down in the front. Like I said, even the body of the truck was off of the truck and just out in the drive, the road there in front of the house, so. Uh, okay, that's it.
Thank you, Joan. Okay, so I'll move to the next one. It says, back to Joan, give a summary of the PC meeting.
Okay, uh, we didn't get real far, but the PC started discussing that. They were working on a different definition for the types of units, you know, one being a home or a small business owner saying, I want solar power. And then the other being a large business that's manufacturing power to sell. So, they thought it would be better to have just those two categories. And they didn't want to deal with kilowatts as a stopping point, as a limit. They said roof-mounted solar panels will govern themselves. There's only so much you can put on the roof. And the ground-mounted panels for homes, or as I said, small business, like a daycare or something, if they want, you know, solar power. They wanted to limit it, they talked about limiting it to 1,000 square feet of panels. Okay? And they agreed that to follow the stormwater requirements that were laid out by DEP, that as long as you could, you know, meet all the requirements, you don't need to do anything for stormwater. So, that is, is, they talked about setbacks, that the setbacks were, again, the smaller units would follow the setback for the zoning area. Uh, and there would be no buffering required there because we don't require buffering for accessory structures. In that, you know, if you put something in your backyard, you don't have to buffer it. So, there was no buffering there. But for the larger units, they were discussing to allow maybe a percentage of the total acreage that you could have panels on. And that we would require a heavier buffer for the commercial, when I say the commercial part, you know. So, that's what they were discussing. We didn't actually say, this is it. But Pete is putting that all together, and then we'll, you know, go into it again next month.
You mentioned a heavier buffer, but I assume that might also include a wider than setback?
Well, the buffer for, now see, that would be a commercial business. So, the buffer for a commercial business, I believe, is 35 feet.
Okay.
So, you know, and we can put in there that we want, you know, a nicer buffer, something that's, um, more opaque for, let's, whatever. Which, which, which way do we go on here? But, so you can see that.
Translucent? Less of a translucent?
No, not translucent, I think it was.
Not translucent, yeah, that's a little word.
Closer to opaque.
To hide, to hide things.
With deciduous trees, or there was a leaf, with leaves or?
No, evergreens.
Evergreens.
Evergreens you want all the time.
Or some type of truck, or something that, that would hide it. And then, also that the, uh, the wiring and everything would have to be underground. So, you would, if there were a commercial operation, you wouldn't see the wires show all over. So, that's basically a start to the block.
Yeah, good progress, yes.
Well, it's funny how they came up with different ideas than what we've talked about for how many months, even as restricting the sizes. You know, we talked in terms of kilowatt hours, and they immediately said, no. What do we care how much power? Because panels are being changed every day, and they're being more efficient every day. So, if we limit that.
That's smart. They were just following the ones that were already out there.
Yeah, but if we do it by, if we do it by size, then whatever fits in that area, you can have.
That's great.
It's fine with a PC, right? You guys are smart guys.
Okay, good, good, excellent. All right, so we'll close that out. Thank you, Joan. And then we'll turn it over to Paul. So, I know you did all the meeting, but you have these in talks, so please.
Yeah, Paul. First, I would like to start off by mentioning that we did co-sponsored talk on September 12th in London with New London Historic Committee. The speaker was Ben Cody, who was one of the co-owners of 1723 in here in the Southern Village. He talked about, sort of, the history of galleries and buildings in the eastern United States with a special focus on Pennsylvania. And it was interesting, there was a lot of stuff, you know, I never heard about before. And talked about mutually well-read about wires and things. And we had a good turnout, and I think everybody got very informed with this. So, moving on, um, as you know, I sent out an email, and it, as with the original letter that I had sent to the Penda Archaeological, not another consultant, I don't know what her formal title is, I'm not exactly aware. And in early August, Penda had basically said that we've identified, you know, four locations in Franklin Township, Albany, 96, that would be considered eligible for the National Register. Two of them were previously known, one being the former Mattson House that they almost into New London that is associated with the McCain family. And the other being Campbellsville. And then additionally, they added the Victorian House down there, as you mentioned, sort of a cross from Jeff Coates. And then they added another old farmstead that's also from McCain property, and it's just south of, on the other side of the neighborhood, from the Mattson place. They said basically that the workers had no effect. And for the three large, you know, former farmsteads, that's true, they're well set back. And Penda isn't planning on doing anything significant that would have any sort of impact on those properties. In the village, um, I decided to, shall we say, pick a small battle? And basically said, look, can't who in there rearrange the roads, take out the longstanding small green island, which in some old postcards is called the village square, and say that you're not having effect, especially when doing that and creating stop signs is going to lead to an increase in truck loads when they have to come to a stop and then start back up and pull out. Pollution, which will be associated with both the starting and stopping of trucks and the standing traffic generally. I think that starting and stopping cars is not such a big deal. And the congestion that will result that at certain times a day will affect the properties that are in the village. This was some of the same stuff I basically said when we met last time, and I was talking to Penda as opposed to their archaeological staff. Or their, not their archaeological, their architectural staff. So, I sent it off, and I basically thought that was the end of it. I've had so many uphill battles with Penda. I write my letters, they go, um, we win things, I have a challenge, and we lose all the things I have a challenge. So, as of, and the reason why this is all short notice is I didn't hear back of any response from Penda until Monday, when I was surprised to get an email from Monica saying, hi, the project team would like to meet with us to discuss our concerns. And so, um, I talked briefly with Karen Marshall, who is the Heritage Preservation Officer for Chester County. She's with the Planning Commission. And she acts as a support person for various historical commissions and powers. And, um, we tried to make sense of it, and we thought, well, maybe, you know, I've gotten some traction, or it's what they said. Anyway, then I sent a note, and you have copies of my reply back to, and one of the first things, you know, I said, well, you know, you want to meet, you know, I need to arrange your meeting space, et cetera. I came in, I talked to Joan about that yesterday. And then after I talked to Joan, I sent my email out to the supervisors. So, this morning, I get a short note back from Monica saying, thanks for the email. They're going to be meeting in the field, by the field, they just mean outdoors, near the brass island to discuss your concerns. We do not need front meetings. And then, rather than respond to any of my questions of who might be there, who might like to be there, she said, the intent of the meeting is for Penda, the Penda design team, to meet with you and discuss the proscope of work of dislocation and your concerns. So, it, I don't find it a very, shall we say, uplifting response in the sense that it begins to make it look more like this is going to be a formality as they attempt to do a certain amount of appropriate diligence on their part in order to seek that, well, we did talk to them, we reviewed it, and, and I could be very wrong about this, but I, this is the sense I'm getting. And this is the sense Karen Marshall has copied in on the various responses, and this is sort of the sense she teaches away from this too. Nonetheless, I do want to meet with them. I do want to make at least the core case that they are changing the village in ways that can have a negative impact on the village. And that just because we're not tearing down any structures, which is the usually, the usual definition of a negative impact, that there are impacts that can create real problems. One of the, my points when I wrote in my email is saying, you know, it would be nice if we could quantify this stuff. We talk in generalities about how much the traffic can back up, and nobody really knows exactly what's going to happen. And, you know, there, it would be nice to have some sense of just how bad it could be. And they have ways to figure things out by putting cameras on the road and seeing how much traffic passes through, when it passes through. So, I was hoping for some impact on that. It sounds like we're not going to get any feedback, at least at this meet, about that. Um, but I will go there and make my case. I'm hoping that there will be a couple people from the overlapping membership of the Harvard Historical Commission, but it's a completely difficult time. I'm thinking that I would like to meet with them October 8th just because it gives me a little more of the time, and I have a lot of stuff going on. It gives me a chance to, to sort of thrash this out, and maybe meet and talk with Karen Marshall, and talk room order death, perhaps looking at the site itself. And I would like to have the support of the supervisor, if possible, at the supervisory meeting, if possible. I understand that this does not work over this schedule. I have no idea where this is going to go.
Do they realize how dangerous that it's going to be to meet out there?
We're not going to, you know, maybe, maybe they should discover all of the various issues themselves.
Well, where do you park, is your, your?
Well, I would suggest, well, when, when, so they want to hear back from me on the meeting time by Friday. That is another thing that became clear when it was, that was hoping to the end of her meeting. And at that point, I would suggest that either, you know, I would recommend to them that they park in the Ducklings, or we could possibly park in the empty, you know, gas station anywhere.
Right.
Because there's nobody there. I don't expect, we're looking at a lot of cars either way, so I don't think it's going to matter the whole lot. But I would point out that that's, if you want to be there on site, that's where it's going to have to be. When I'm at the cash out there, we park to the far end of the Ducklings, part of the lot. Yeah, and walking around, and can be interesting, especially if the return's bad, but.
That's probably going to be a bad time at the Ducklings because they're, they'll have parents coming for pickup.
Yeah, well, well, maybe that's something I'd see too. Hey, um, it depends if you pick three or four, it'll probably make you better. I'll pick the one time that has the most traffic. Well, I thought, I thought about that, but I'm not really sure which time has the most traffic because around 3 o'clock, you may actually see more traffic associated with the school. Right. I suspect that, and I don't know what the traffic patterns really are out there, but I suspect that at 4 o'clock, you're not seeing the kind of traffic you see later when people begin to filter back, you know, after 5, which is the usual here all the time. But I suspect, uh, the only, you know, I suspect there will probably be 3 o'clock or 4 o'clock because if you make it later, it's easier for people to show up. Usually, you're taking the most time off of work.
So, for a policy?
So, that's what I'm thinking.
Because I like to be there, just as.
Yeah, well, I would, you know, I think it's, it's, you know, it's just important to know that, for them to know that our supervisors are concerned about this too. We're not talking, at the moment, all we're talking about is, you know, concerns that this is handled in the best way possible for the residents and, and so that the, because it's the, the ability of our residents and/or the occasional business to live and work there comfortably that is going to make the village economically viable. And that's how we're going to preserve those houses. They're not going to save themselves. They need to be, they need to have an economic underpinning of some sort. They need to be in a broader environment where they're seen as useful and livable. If you alter that too drastically, without thinking about perhaps other ways of maybe mitigating some of the effects of what you're creating, then in long-term, but very slow, it can amount to the same as tearing down a structure. I mean, we already have one problem with the property owner in the Southern Village. This township does not need to be going to court for more houses. You know, we want properties that want to be in the village and are happy to be there. And we want other people to live in the village and say, you know, I'm going to buy one of these houses, I'd like to live here. That's going to make the village work on a term. And that's the real problem. So, um, you know, this is, you know, I'm sure we'll get a lot of talk, a lot of edits, and they'll leave without coming to any sort of final decision, and then they'll let it. And then I'll embrace another one.
But at least they're taking, I mean, Mr. Detective, taking the time.
Oh, no, the very fact that Karen Marshall was surprised that they even said, we'll meet to talk. So.
A step.
That's a step. And, and I don't have problems with, you know, engaging in three or four steps and coming out on the losing side with this kind of stuff. That's often the way it works out, and I've kind of gotten used to that. But, and before, you know, we meet, I will put together something short when I'm just going to, so you'll have an idea of what I'm interested in trying to talk about. But it's really not much more than you've heard me talk about tonight at the last meeting.
Is Karen and Natasha going to be there as well?
Karen can be there for the 8th. It's, and that's sort of within the responsibilities of her job. Natasha is not really, you know, when she came down to talk both times, she's kind of doing that on her own time with the possibility of maybe good building goodwill with the township administration, and maybe eventually getting a job for her firm with the township administration, practically speaking. So, um, we can talk to her, but she's in a different situation than Karen Marshall is.
She, but she, she had some thoughts influenced with regards to Marshallton, is that correct?
Yeah, Marshallton is something of a different situation, so. But, but the point that both Karen and Natasha were talking about is that, you know, if you can get traffic calmed down, you can make, get people, it's a, it's a positive vicious cycle in a way. If you can get traffic calmed down, then you get people outside. You get people outside, and they have safe places to cross. Traffic slows down too. Compared to Marshallton, we have, we do have narrower road margins to work with here. They have really ample, in the center of Marshallton, they have ample road margin. They put in standard-issue sidewalks on both sides of the road. And we're not working with that kind of space, so we have, we have limitations.
Right.
On the other hand, should we get to a point where the powers that be agree that perhaps there is some negative effect that needs to be mitigated, it's possible that we can get Penda to think about some solutions for us.
Yeah, I'm just saying, Karen may have some, it sounds like she might be the next one.
Well, Karen is a historical person.
Okay.
Natasha's a traffic person.
Whoever, like, whoever you think might be the person who comes across as the expert in their eyes, like, as opposed to you who may have the best interest because of your position in the historical commission, somebody who is perceived as an outsider, who has a supposed expert view on how to, it's just like a little bit cop, bad cop, no?
The only person who is going to get them to stand up and listen is if the PHMC decides to say, on 2nd clock, we think there's a problem here. The PHMC is the State Historical Preservation Office. And they're essentially the stand-in for the federal government's historical preservation. Everybody's sort of deputized the way this is set up. And so, in the Section 166 process, which is what this will be, they have to say, you know, when they say, we've got an issue, they're saying it with the authority of the federal government behind them. And the money that's coming from, for the project, comes from the federal government. So, basically then, the real consultation begins. We're not at that point.
We could, if raised.
If, if, if that's where we would like to be, I don't know. And then I would not bet on getting there, to put it bluntly.
I have two questions. One is, in your letter, I would like to point out, recognized as, Campbell's other point was, recognized as a National Register eligible several times on the basis. recognized as a national register eligible several times on the basis. Second paragraph, my question with that is, we're eligible, should we apply? And if by applying, does that, would that impede any progress before, by being accepted into the registry as opposed to just being eligible, by being part of the registry, would that change?
So, I would break that out, from my understanding of the situation, I would break that out. There are really many answers to that. One is the amount of time involved probably to it. The, for that really to succeed, we would need the support, and in some instances, we're probably talking about the acquiescence of residents in the village because some probably would not be so, you know, thrilled about that necessarily. There's a difference between actually being on the national register and being eligible. And then finally, it's a, it's a long process. And once we engage you that there is no guarantee that we even, there's a big difference between being eligible and being on it. You have to go through the approval process. And so it's not like we've got this trump card we can play. We would, we would take time to find out whether we'd be even be approved. And it would all pretty much be done in a week or two.
And so if we were not approved, could we not continue to say we're eligible?
Yes.
That's a big problem.
Yeah, yes. That's, that is the other side. We can still be a township historic district, but then we've lost that sort of nice ambiguity that works in our favor. So sometimes it pays. And really, all, all that the Section 116 process worries about identifying are those places that are eligible. So they don't have to be on it. We're not really gaining significant status from the bare bones approach of the process. It might carry a little more weight, but it wouldn't gain us that much more. And I'd rather not, you know, visit us.
They could put a burden on a lot of the homeowners too.
Well, it depends upon what, how it's all, how it all goes through. I'm not sure we'd put a whole lot more of a burden than it presently has with the Harv because there's a difference between a district and an individual property. With an individual property, they become interested in what's inside your house as well as what's outside your house. With a district, it's more about exterior. So it would probably add some extra burden, but I don't know that it would become especially monstrous compared to what it is now.
Nice call.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, wait.
Yeah, I was just gonna post, yeah.
Oh, one, one last question. When you meet with them on, or when we meet with them on the 8th, should we have an idea of what we want as opposed to saying, "We don't like what you're proposing"? Should we throw in something like, "We would like to have this"?
I think, well, it may be a good idea to have some options. I think that fundamentally, the question to ask PENDUP is, would be to say, you know, "How can we mitigate this? How can we do things that will help minimize this?" And it is, and it's a fact. We know we're gonna have these effects if we have stop signs. We know we want stop signs, probably speaking for safety. We know that PENDUP was in here and they said, they looked at a traffic light and they decided that wouldn't work. I mean, I'm curious as to understand why that would work out, but that's just a matter of curiosity. You know, it's like, so can we do other things that will provide some benefits that may mitigate negative effects? Can you work some crosswalks into this in various locations? Maybe back, you know, between the school and Woodmaster somewhere. Maybe in the center of the village, we're gonna have stop signs. Let's, let's put some crosswalks, you know, let's make sure there's enough space so that we've got, so that people can get across. So it's marked out. Because having marked out crosswalks is different than having a stop sign, which I can tell you, crossing at Appleton and Walker, you know. I, I feel like I'm playing a game with people when I just sort of strut out into the middle of the road and they're coming up Appleton and pretty good clips of them. So, I mean, we can talk about some things and some things, and we've talked about some things in advance. And some of these things may work and some of them may not work, you know. We, we have, we don't have a lot of space to work with that, you know, when you stand there inside and really look hard, that's obvious. We have some space to work with. We, you know, I've, I've talked about, we talked about, I talked when we were here last time about the Gateway Islands to govern. Gateway Islands, if we had Gateway Islands, they wouldn't do anything necessarily to change the amount of traffic that backs up to the stop sign, but they might start people slowing down longer before they get to the stop sign. Maybe we could get them to drop the speeds down to 25 rather than 35 as they now plan. And it's up to their engineers to figure out how this works. You come back and tell us it doesn't work. You know, we're not engineers. PENDUP is the ones, they have the capacity to think of solutions. Probably better, more, more, you know, they, they have more ideas than we do. I mean, they were the ones...
Because they were as old as the state.
Right, they were the ones that came up with the traffic circle, correct? Right, which seems to be broadly agreeable to people as a preference over putting a stop sign there. So, you know, they're capable of giving talk to these things. We first have to get them to the point where they agree that there is in fact a need for them to give talk to these things. We're not there yet.
Yeah, that's the purpose of it.
This is, and, and in theory, that's what could be accomplished in this discussion, assuming that we're talking with a party that's actually willing to get to that point.
I think the meeting's worth while, we've really set up.
Yeah, the meeting, the meeting is worth while. It's nice to have the meeting because we didn't get ruled out of hand, which is what I expected. But, but I would not go into it thinking that we've got anything resembling a done deal or even sympathy from PENDUP.
They have a good attitude, you're not, you're not over expecting anything.
No, I just, look, my job is to argue for the historic district. And then, you know, it's like, it, and, and they, you know, the folks at PENDUP, they have their doubts too, and I understand that, you know. I'm sure they would have, they, you know, they might well have wanted to get this project and were in a long time ago. But the district does have the right to some consideration for PENDUP because it's a federal bonded project. And I'm gonna do my best to see that we get as far as we can.
Thank you so much, Paul. So, am I gonna close that out, if that's okay?
Yeah, so just to summarize, that all things being equal, I'm naming for, say, 4:00 p.m. at, on October 8th.
Right.
Okay? If there's any change, I'll let you know, but...
I'll work it all through Jim.
Well, yeah, I can just send out and email everybody, you know, but if you want to go through Jim.
It's probably better, Jim, well, we got us Marshall together, Jim keeps us in line.
Yeah, it's not like you all need to be there. If one or two people come up and just say, you know, "We all can't make it, but we all are interested in seeing that the best that can happen for the historic district happens." And they know there's, we've got at least some support from the supervising, so it's, you know, it's not just, you know, a couple of the people from the Hysterical Commission that are, you need to say, out there arguing for historical things.
Thanks so much.
Sure.
I'm just gonna turn to Jim, I mean, you were having an FSA report.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Real simple report this week and this month. This is the first report for the 2019 season. From a membership standpoint, we're at capacity with 35 members. And we had four members fail to renew their membership this year. We were able to fill that with four additional township residents who were on our waiting list to get on, so maybe we said that. Currently, we are full at 35. Over the weekend of the 7th and 8th of September, we had our yearly qualifying shoot for archery and shotgun. The number's 25, 22 people for archery passed their proficiency, 21 for shotgun passed. I'm sure we're going to have them make a shoot day, but I haven't heard when that will be. But currently, we have 13 members that did not come up that weekend due to other constraints. So some of those, from an archery standpoint, they're able to go to the board members and qualify at their houses for archery because it's just a block and 15 yards. I think as long as they can safely shoot at their houses, it's not an issue. We've done that in the past, so. Hunting season is approaching for archery this Saturday. It officially opens. I know hunting season in general for dove and early goose season's been open since the beginning of September, so there might be some shotguns blasting out around some of these farmers' fields around here. So if you hear that, it's just, it's because that is currently open. We'll have none of us involved in that. Other things, noteworthy from a shotgun standpoint, this year, the first day of buck season will open up on the Saturday after Thanksgiving as opposed to the following Monday after Thanksgiving. There was a lot of talk throughout the state of doing that, and they passed it surprisingly. So a lot of people for, a lot of people against, breaking that Monday tradition. So it's just something new this year. Parcels, the signs have either gone up around them or will be going up in the next couple days. And before I left here, I sent out a reminder email to board, "Hey, I haven't seen anything. Just, you know, what's going on?" Safety zones were marked as needed across the parcels, so all that will be taken care of prior to the season starting. Harvest report, of course, nothing at this time. You know, I'm just driving around, I'm seeing a fair amount of deer. Nothing crazy, but they're out there, they're moving. With the farmers starting to knock down their corn, just be wary of that, because the deer are moving around. From a community service, service project standpoint, since July, when our new, our new calendar, club year starts for the club, we start counting our new service hours for the year. We've had a cleanup over in Chesterville, Creek Roads. The area around Bad Shire, parking lot's been moved, weed whacks kept clean. CrossFit Park, there were some benches that were cleaned in there last weekend. Reso's handed down resurfaced, I don't know if there's graffiti or paint peeling, I don't know what the exact issue was there. Also, the club's been working with Jeff, they need to install five grills throughout the park. I know they work Saturday and Sunday last weekend, and they're gonna be out there again this weekend to do some more prep work. And we'll have the remaining materials hopefully here soon that they can finish maybe the following weekend. Just in time for winter.
At least we get it done.
But I, I mean, when I saw that, I was like, "Hey, it's a great idea." People go out there, have some more fun, the whole public with the grills. Another service project is, with the early rain season, I wasn't able to get out around my own, the four trail as much as I have in the past because there's some areas I just couldn't get through because of how wet it was. But since things have dried up, I've been able to get out there. And the farmer himself, he's been taking care of a lot from the farm itself to the top of the grapevines and all the way down to the corner of the property. But I've been able to get out back around back. I know Whipple has been doing some out there too, but I understand he's had some problems lately. Some of the grass was a little higher when I was walking the trail. So I was, I mean, getting back when I was able to, back on the crossing the state side and also doing down a long walker road down into the valley as far as you could get. There's some areas I don't, I wanna go in front of my mower, because it's just a mower and not a tractor. So, so trying to stay on top of that, luckily the grass has started growing a little bit. My mower repaired too, stopped that beacon one, so I didn't, not as scared about going out and blowing it up. So since July to now, the club's completed 58 hours of service. Going through my records last night of what I've been keeping, so over the last three years, just a little over 300 hours of service that we've contributed to the township.
I really appreciate it. You're a fast-paced person.
Right, we appreciate the option and the ability to get out there and take my axe in the woods.
Doesn't sound like you're napping, it sounds like you're working.
I'm probably hunting.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, but you're waiting, waiting, yeah.
Been there, fall asleep. But none of that, thank you, and see you next month.
Well, thank you very much, Tim.
Thanks.
I need to get your truck, so if you want to...
Yeah, I can help him. Somebody to drive me over. But I wanna find out about the radar.
Okay, all right, good.
So they're wearing a coat.
So you wanna... Of that kind of radar, just read it anyways. So it's a topic.
So, Jim's finished, so we're gonna move on to business and radar sign discussion. And it says, "No motion offered," so...
Well, I guess it depends on what we decide.
We're not, we're not going to, well, okay, so we go to the air.
So if we make a decision, yeah, then I can, I can manufacture one.
Okay, there's no motion at this point. I have to admit, I don't know much about this. What was the emphasis for this?
Well, we thought, there's a lot of problem with people shooting off of 896.
Of course.
You know, at a high rate of speed and just flying down.
All the way to the stop sign.
Well, if they stop, it's a stop sign. Yeah, so, so we have had a lot of success with the radar sign that we put out on Gypsy Hill Road. You know, the kind that tells you when to get. So that, we've had a lot of success out there.
So it'll just say, "Speed enforced by radar"? Do you mean, are you speeding, so you're...
Yeah, it notifies you that you're speeding. So we thought if we...
Oh, you're talking about the blinking thing?
Yes.
Oh, I missed that.
So we thought, we thought if we could put something out here to warn people as soon as they shoot off of 896, that we might get them to slow down to the, a slower speed. You know, that's we were talking about doing that. So Jeff has been getting some quotes, just updating quotes, because we did purchase that other one. Something similar to what we had out on Gypsy Hill Road, unfortunately, it's in the $4,000 range.
Wow.
Now, while we're, while we're looking at this, one of the things we've found today is one of these on a little trailer, so that they, it's not, it's not fixed anywhere. So, yeah, so wherever we have a problem, like for example, if we put it out here and had it out there, first of all, PENDUP said we have to move whatever we put out there, we can't leave it there permanently.
Every six to eight weeks.
Okay.
Six to eight weeks?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Well, that's PENDUP.
Oh, because it's PENDUP? You're gonna do it for Gypsy Hill?
That's all right. So, so if you had something like this, you know, we could put it up this way for eight weeks, maybe put it down, come any other way, warning people for, you know, eight weeks or any other place we needed. I mean, I know, I know it's a big expense, but I mean, it's something that, like I said, Leah found that has, we've had a lot of success with it. I mean, because there are some people who don't pay attention to it, and they're not gonna pay attention to anything you do. But I know the people who are responsible, who may not even realize it's a meeting, they see something like that and automatically shuts it down, makes them slow down.
I can speak for me, it's a big help for me with Gypsy Hill because I would normally be zipping around, I see this, "Oh, gosh, I'm slowing down."
So again, it's something to consider, I mean, whether we...
How expensive is it? First of all, someone steal it?
Well, you, you have to change it.
You have to turn it home.
Turn telephone pole or to take some of the...
I don't know, people do that. And then how expensive, this one's $2,400, right?
Okay, that, yeah, but the trailer is $2,400. So the whole thing is $62.99.
Wow.
So it, again, it's something...
I guess we'll have to decide today, but maybe, I, I don't know. I think if I looked at that in that corner, I appreciate it a lot because cars really are dangerous there. And like you said, we can't keep it there permanently, but I think in the big picture, if we have the money, it's...
Well, we do have money in the, in the road fund, you know, in the, you have a fund, the road budget. And if we did, if, just say if we did do this with the... And if we did, if, just say if we did do this with the, with the trailer, you know, we could live up here for eight weeks and like I said, and move it down there for eight weeks and then move it back, you know, if we had saw that it was really helping. And then the beauty of this, if we have another spot that, that we're saying is, you know, becoming an issue. But I know myself, every morning when I, when I come up eight ninety-six and have to turn, you know, to come down on Appleton and I make my turn and I'm sitting there, the cars that just shoot, shoot right down there, I mean, the speed they're going is unbelievable. Because the school isn't in, you know, the lights aren't blinking yet or if it is, they're not paying attention to it. And, and it's, they just fly off of that road.
Yeah, I definitely agree with you because they're idiots, but it's all Appleton, all the way down.
Right.
And maybe it's something the township may wanna, and I'd love it if they could stop there overnight because I've been passed on Appleton, I've been tailgated, people fly up on me doing fifty, sixty miles an hour and I'm doing forty. So it, it's crazy and I'd love to run a couple of them into the dishes. But maybe it's something we wanna hold off a little bit on until maybe he has some solutions for the intersection, slow them down. Because the big thing, as he said, is coming off eight ninety-six on the Appleton, where we can slow them down.
So the supervisors are, I believe, sort of aware of this, but you may not be, but one, the, the plan for the eight ninety-six intersection calls for the reconfigure of this and the intersection. Not only will there be a stop sign, but traffic will be pointed in such a way that even if they weren't an always stop, they would have to slow down and stop and turn. So they're gonna turn the road, there's no longer gonna be a straight shot. You're gonna have to turn. So this works for now and then any other future problems.
Well, yeah, that's, I guess, that's what's nice about the spending the money for the trail because we can move wherever we need it. And, and when they do do the road, it's a couple of years out. I mean, I don't think they're gonna start here as the first place that they do it, so.
They're talking a couple of years, did you have something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the trailer's going, you can put it on the back of the truck and leave it, otherwise you have to have all the guys out there, a tractor with a chain, lifting it up on two poles and it's, it's a unit, it's, it's heavy.
Probably a hundred twenty pounds if not more.
So we save money in installation by getting.
Well, it's not hard when you do, you, you will.
With an installed GPS tracker so you can find it.
Well, you, I know with the one in Gypsy Hill, you actually got data.
You can get that.
So what are you thinking here?
The curbs, they're not due to start till twenty-twenty-one and that doesn't mean they're starting here.
I know that. The problem is, I don't see it because, you know, I'm not, I don't drive on this road that often, quite honestly, so. But the only thing I can say is, we've had numerous meetings and, you know, the residents who were here, when PennDOT, there was somebody back there and his neighbor over there, forget their name offhand, but they were citing issues. So, and it's, this is something that's been talked about for a very long time. I think the number's high, but that's maybe the going rate.
There's a very limited resource for these and we checked the two different places and the prices was a few dollars.
Yeah, and I was doing some pricing for scouts for a trailer, that sounds close to two thousand dollar range for just a trailer.
Right.
So.
So it's not a neutral price?
There's nothing else we can do to the road. Liz put her signs up and all, all that and, I mean, I hope it works. It has in the past, so we have some history with these radar signs. Again, I don't know, I don't know the issues as well because I don't drive these, that road as often going eight ninety-six to Appleton, but I've heard enough people issue concerns.
Just stepping out of my township, my father lives across the street, so anytime his girlfriend comes out or I do, it's just amazing. And if anyone ever wants to stay on my father's front porch just to watch and listen to traffic, it's like they launched themselves.
Yeah, when they come up to Appleton, it's horrible.
Yeah, it's, it's forty, forty-five into the stretch up to the stop sign.
And that's, that's probably the only solution we have. I mean, you can't have police presence there all the time, you can't do any road retardants or anything.
The police cannot ticket anybody for speeding coming off of that road because you have to have enough of an area to warn them that the speed limit is reduced before they get ticketed and we do not have that there.
They get it from going to stop signs.
They get it from going to stop signs, but that's it. So that's what, at least with this, like I said, most of the people don't pay attention to this, it's gonna make them realize that, you know, they're doing something wrong. I just know, you know, I, you know, I live in Delaware and Delaware has installed these all over the place. I mean, just about every road you look at anymore has, has these on them. And, and again, I mean, it's made me realize, I, I'm not a speeder, but I mean, you know, if it says twenty-five, I mean, you know, I mean, I may be going thirty-five, you know, but it makes you stop and think that, hey, I'm not supposed to be doing that.
You always, I have had it whenever I drive and I knew there's one around, I didn't, first thing I do, like right by the act.
Yeah.
I look at my speed comparing to what is, you know, it's like, okay, maybe I'm a little faster, I can slow down. Plus, if you have a radar detector, there's things, you know, it starts interfering. So the person who may not be familiar with this road, also may not sure if it's a, one of these things or a police officer around the corner.
Yeah.
What's nice about these two is you can set the limit so no one can try and peg it at ninety-nine or whatever. So you can set that limit, but the data will tell you the actual speed that they're traveling when you pull it off.
How do you feel about this? I would say yes. Jim?
You would say what?
I'd say yes.
Yes, what do you say?
I'm still leaning to the, I know it's expensive, it kills them, but I, I know how successful it's been on Gypsy Hill. I mean, just like I said, for me, Percy, I even watch, and I've gone all the signs you put too, Jeff, so they've really helped with the bus. Oh, yeah. But I just, it just, my brain says, God, slow down here, they're screwing this up.
Do Gypsy Hill people have verbally stated that, that, that sign makes a big difference?
Well, we haven't heard any complaints and, but there's also a change that, of the bus too, so there were two things going on there.
I thought one of the residents had come back and said it was better.
It definitely does.
I can truthfully say, I've been contacted by one of the residents and they like it. They like the radar sign and they also like the Chevron signs that we put up. They feel it's made a world of difference.
I am in support of it.
Okay, I mean, I think the fact that we have a four to zero is.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm all in favor.
You wanna make a motion? Yeah, because it is, it is expensive, but I know you, you've checked all, checked everything you can check.
Well, we, yes, like I said, there's not a lot of places to buy these.
And it's a long-term adjustment.
But we move every six weeks.
If it's on a PennDOT road, it has to be moved every six to eight weeks.
Okay, so Gypsy Hill, we don't have to do that?
Now we have to do that and I did talk PennDOT out of making us get permits to put these on. So I've gotta work with PennDOT when we put them out, but I've got them to say we don't need permit to put, to put it on state road.
Are you gonna be responsible to keep track of the eight weeks and make sure it gets removed?
Yes, sir.
That's Jim's. So should I make a motion or?
You can make a motion.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, hopefully I do it work. I make a motion to authorize the purchase of a radar sign at no more than sixty-five hundred dollars. I'll say, I'll say. So thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Four to zero.
Good job.
Thank you. Thanks for the research.
How long will that take to get?
Uh, six to eight weeks or sooner.
Six to eight weeks, okay.
And we have the money, right?
Yes, we do.
And, okay, from that picture, it's almost gonna take up some space. Do you have a little square that you're planning on putting it?
You mean, when we put it down here?
Yeah.
There's, if they put it down close to where Liz, I was looking tonight.
Can't be on somebody else's property.
Well, Liz said we can put it on her property.
Okay.
Okay, and she's got a telephone pole right before you come to her, right?
Right.
So we can put it there and.
So it'll be obvious, it'll be obvious to the traffic and at the same time not infringing upon anybody's rights who's, who's owns the ground on it.
Right, well, like I said, she.
We don't wanna, obviously can't be on the road or even close proximity where a, a sign you near has been a whack-in.
Right, it has to be that where we would put our signs or.
Has to be on someone's property.
But which, well, it's in the right way, we have a right to do that, but Liz, Liz said, you know, Liz.
Oh, she's the one that's begging for it.
She'll be happy when we tell her we're gonna do that. And I truly think it's gonna make a difference because.
I think it will.
Jim, you're happy, right?
Yeah, just one question, does that trailer require a license?
You can tell it, you can tell it, but it's made you go in the back of the pickup truck too.
Does it require a license to be parked around or registered that way or anything?
Ah, man.
Yeah, well, I mean, the thing is, make sure you get a big enough chain in lock.
Oh, yeah.
Because it will disappear for sure.
We were talking about having a.
Now, look at your house first, because I know you're looking for one.
No, I don't need it.
Having, having some rings or something welded onto it so it, you know, chain can get through.
And, and something to, if, if there's options you may wanna consider that protects the screen, because people are known to throw things and stuff around here.
I know, but they're, I mean, these are supposed to be board crew.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's the best you can do.
Yeah, I didn't know what it was, it just.
You get somebody, you get an idiot, you.
Oh, you're happy too, right?
I think, I mean, I don't see too many other options, frankly, than the attempt to reduce the speed for the traffic coming off of eight ninety-six on the Appleton. And, you know, I can only, I can only second what John said about watching those cars come down. It's, if I would see a confirming left turn signal that a car is going any, any safe, I will not pull out. Unless I judge that they're firm.
Yesterday, Jeff and Jim went out to go check a road right on top of the wood.
Well, we went out and it was simultaneously, people were speeding and blew the stop sign into the cars.
Didn't stop at all.
That is frightening.
And the person that was in an accident up here at the corner that hit one of Jim's trucks, two weeks later in the same car with duct tape, they blew the stop, stop sign down here.
Yeah, that's not gonna be used anywhere from the stop sign all the way down to Chisel Creek to try to slow them down.
You wonder how people could be so careless.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, certain numbers.
People treat the stop sign like it's, check and see if there's anybody parked there and then proceed.
It's funny because I, I see that stop sign, I won't, I'm like you, because I won't move. I'm like, I'm almost frightened just to sit, I'm waiting, I'm just waiting for it to be clear because I, like you said, I don't trust them, you know, unless I, even though with the terms, I'm sitting there, I'm not moving, like, people pride me, but I'm just so afraid to inch out because I'm sure it's clear both ways.
Well, to some people, four-way stop means I can go, everybody else is going.
Well, it becomes a fifty-five, sixty mile an hour stretch.
It's many drivers. I hope that's a, I hope that's a, it's a very small percentage of people. It's like, whenever I drive and I, I end the left lane and someone's going thirty miles an hour, fifty-five, first thing I'll do is I'll look down and, most of the time I'll see if that's a major license plate or.
Just, just as a, a point, it's, it's not really a similar word, but I think, you know, Gypsy Hill, I, I noticed myself that people are going slower there, wherever that radar, I guess, I guess that's the proper name, but I would call it a, a speed display sign rather than a radar sign. In any case, I don't know that they're all over Delaware. I drive to Newcastle County, I don't see.
There's a lot.
Too many, but there's, there's probably a lot. But there is one on the Platte Bridge, if you've ever gone on the Platte Bridge, just off nine ninety-five, and they put one there, is it thirty-five? I think it's, it says speed limit thirty-five, your speed is forty-five or something like that. And if you go the speed of the speed limit, you are going to cause a traffic jam.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a horrible place. My, my only point is.
It's not the right place for it, yeah.
Really horrible place for it. And it's a horrible place to have that speed limit. You gotta keep your speed up to get up over the bridge and usually you're in a mob of traffic and if you go thirty-five, someone's gonna run you over. Someone's gonna hit you or it's. So there's, there's appropriate places for it and inappropriate places for it. And I think, hopefully this is appropriate, I would say it's appropriate. Certainly Gypsy Hill, very appropriate, that's a residential word.
One must be said, when we're being on the trailer, it's easy to move, but any other situation, you know, if you have residents complaining in an area, you know, you know, you can put it out there and, and just even move it around, you know, it's a.
It's a great point. Because we do have residents come once in a while and we can keep it moving. We don't get any bonuses or discounts because we bought one before, right? We have coupons?
Ten percent off.
All right, so.
We have a trial on Tuesday.
I'm gonna close, close this discussion, we did good, but I do wanna, I don't, I need your help helping this one. So, um, the agenda's done, but there is something that Stefan's gonna bring up. So do, do I just vote public comment?
No, I think you wanted to have that in the business section, isn't that correct? If it's business that the board has to deal with, then you should bring it up in the business section. If it's just a comment, you should make it in the public comment.
Okay, so before we go to public comment, part of this, I sent out a proposal to everyone, I think a couple of days ago. Yeah, I took initiative without asking anyone's feedback, so maybe that was my fault, but I also never got any saying, let's, let's focus our, our attention or dollars on the township site first until, until today. So I met with Tom Keely, who's one of our residents and did landscape work, including the shrubbery, which I think turns nice, against, which backs up against a some brigglier property as well as he did plant Ralph's tree for us four years ago. And I met with him to get an idea of what we could do for the healing garden at the park. Right now, everything has been kinda wiped away and all is, is four beds that are about four hundred square feet each. Eight beds, I'm sorry, that are four hundred square feet each with two center islands designed for a tree. So I took some of the suggestions and, and put it up. As an idea, and he suggested that to do loriapi across the entire section would be very expensive to, and I said, cost is a concern, so he suggested putting loriapi with grass, but also breaking that up with having two boxwoods in the corner of each section, along with two trees and, and that'll, that'll be about four feet tall away, great marbles. The proposal would be, was around thirty-four hundred dollars and I shared that with everybody. One response was, let's just put grass there, which is still gonna cost something, but have somebody clear out the mounds and put grass. I'm not really in favor of doing that. I'd rather, if we're not gonna, if we're gonna put grass, then let's just keep it as is. That's my personal opinion. Another idea is that we still need more screening here at the township site. The only thing, area I can see that would require imminent screening, imminent? Imminent? Imminent?
Yeah, meeting soon.
Yeah. Imminent screening might be to add another row of trees, the same type of tree that we have against the work area, so we can, you know, stagger, but put another layer. I don't know if we need a whole lot more here. John suggested maybe going behind so that you don't see the salt shit from eight ninety-six to plant something there. So the question is, now that we're talking, do we want to bag the idea of doing anything in the park until a later date? Do we want to, because it is coming up on planning season, do we wanna do something as John suggested to keep working on the site? To me, I could see, my opinion, I could see doing another layer of row against, so that over time, all that, the cement locks are blocked out. But at the same time, I just don't wanna spend, I think the law of diminishing returns start to kick in. If we start to reduce things against the back wall here, when I think more money could be spent on the park, especially since originally we have, we will have a park down there. So that is a question I have, any, do we wanna, I just don't wanna put grass, but simply put grass, I'd rather just keep.
That would be pointless unless you just wanna forever keep it grass, which doesn't seem fair to whoever came up with the concept of the healing garden. Yeah, I agree too, I don't want, I don't want grass unless it's, like, first of all, who'd want it is a long-term solution and if it's not the long-term solution, then why do it? Like, I'd rather just leave it the way it is until we have, till we have money. And Joe, you're the budget lady. So I always look, I always look to you, I, I know we're doing quite a bit at the park
So I always look to you. I know we're doing quite a bit at the park now. And good stuff, really good stuff. The bathrooms are being done, the top lots being done. We have our stuff on the list. And so it's not like, I think that's really good, right? I think that the work you've already done, Stefan, in this site has been excellent. And your ideas are great. And I don't know how much it costs, but if we get that, the concrete block.
Yeah, put another...
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea. Find out what that costs are. And if we have money in the budget, do this. If we don't have money, keep it the way it is and do a minstrel. But I don't know what the situation is.
Well, no, first of all, it depends on how many more times we have to mow, you know.
How's this going, Joan?
So, I mean, we do, I, let me look, I think, I think it's about 22,000 or down. I have a little bit more to put in. Yeah, 22. And I have some more that's going in there. And so we have to pay for the, we paid for the bathroom fixtures already, so we just have to pay for the work that Tim's going to do. So that has to come out of there. And then, as I said, there's going to be some more mowing. And it's about $1,000 a month from when Jim mows, so I don't know.
I mean, if you think it's pushing it, we'll wait till next year.
Well, I'm not saying it's pushing it. The money, if we use that $12,000, we got towards the top lot, that's not going to cover everything. We're probably going to need another, about another $3,000 for that, okay? So that, that's 15 there. And trying to remember, Tim's paused. 15. I mean, that's going to be close. We're getting close to the spending the 20. I mean, yeah, we might...
It sounds like it should wait till next year.
It's going to be close, okay, as to what...
And if there's something else you need for the bathrooms that we've missed, I'd rather have you have the money to do that. Or if there's something that you need for the top lot, that you have the money to do that. So I think it's a great idea. I just, maybe your friend, not your friend, that you could contract, you just said, we think it's a great idea, just can we hold it off to the spring? I don't know, whatever you want.
Yeah, probably want to hold it off till the...
Next fall.
Fall.
Well, could we do it in the spring? If we put like spraybrush in there or something?
I would think so. I mean, I think the ideal is fall, but yeah, I think we probably could. Is the 2020 plan work, what's the big project for 2020, the tennis court?
Yeah, we have to get prices on that. But I think that's what we talked about.
That's like 17, I thought. That's, oh, no, don't worry.
No, I just want to see what our income is in the autumn. I think what I had suggested, so, you know, it is dry right now, so the mow and hopefully is going to slow down a little bit. If you think, you know, maybe just in a couple of weeks, we revisit it. It's still plenty of time. How much time does he need heads up? And I'm guessing if we plan it even in late October, that's going to be fine.
No, essentially.
So maybe we just revisit it.
Do you think we can play it later?
Well, we, depending how late you do it. I mean, we could, if Jim gets started on the top lot, you know, we could say, okay, you know, it came in cheaper, we've got extra money, you know, and go ahead and do it. I mean, I don't know what, and just leave it the mulch for the winter. If, you know, wait and see. If we can do it, do it. If we can't do it, leave it mulch.
Right, that's, no, that's fine. I'm retiring, so, you know.
Oh, you're not retiring.
So if somebody...
You know where you're at, consultant.
Someone else would have to take the...
It is kind of nice to have Stefan, who cares, is willing to do it. And it's not a lot.
Well, can you be our landscape?
We should see your yard.
I'm talking about a big, you know, difference in money. It sounds like you're comfortable up to a couple thousand, maybe 2,500.
Yeah, but again, when do you think Jim would be able to start on the top lot?
Maybe in about two or three weeks.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we did do that, I mean, we might know something like the middle of October or something.
Yeah, that would be good. It's, we need to have Stefan.
If you had it in October, that's still good, right?
So the coins for your guy to plant, right?
Oh, sure.
Jim's not playing anything, right?
Um, yeah, let's, I mean, I just, you know, it's kind of came down the pipe the last couple of weeks, or last couple of weeks, last couple of days. Figure, let's talk about it. I think we all have somewhat different opinions. John is wanting to focus more on the, I forget the word, the, you know, the back move.
Well, he's the same for landscape.
Yeah. And what I can do is either talk to Dan?
Don.
Don or Clark. And I don't think it needs a permit to plant another six trees or whatever there is to put another.
And that comes out of another budget, right?
Yeah.
So do we have, if I could summarize, I think what I'm hearing is that we're actually very favor, favor the idea of the park proposal. It's just a matter of making sure we can manage the budget. And Joan, you're going to keep on top of it and in a couple of weeks get back to Stefan?
Yeah, and we'll know better. But you want to go ahead with planning for the tree, another row of trees?
And you have our okay, I don't know if I have to motion to do the garden at the park, if, depending on the budget.
If we're funding there.
Right, that's a good way to put it. And then, but we also have our okay to do...
We can start on the trees.
Yeah, that shouldn't be too expensive. That should be less, that should be $1,500 or less.
That's fine.
And the question I have on the park, there is one person who doesn't want to do it. So I, it's fine. We can do this next year. I don't really care.
Well, there's four.
No, you got four.
We have you here.
It's okay to have one person who doesn't agree.
That's why it's important that we, that we, that we are taking care of.
Yeah.
We are doing what he asked us to do.
Making his concern too.
Oh, I was, you pointed that way. I was just going to...
No, no, we, no, no, yeah, forget about our point. I don't know. But you know, you wanted to do some additional work here on the site, we're doing that.
Yes, the only thing I really think would be more important would be putting another layer of trees, offsetting the ones we currently have. So over time, that should hopefully completely block out the cement blocks. I'm not going to worry about somebody on 896 seeing this all.
Yeah, well, you asked, I mean, that's the only thing, you know, I can think of.
I think you got to the point that you're saying it was so hard to thought, there's nothing obvious, because there's nothing obvious.
Unless you guys have, you know, if you think we could use something here, I don't know.
I think it's great. So, yeah, we're, so we've addressed John's concern, which is we are doing, we're finishing off the, what we want to do here. And that, and based on Joan's feedback, and she's going to keep on top of it, we may have enough money to do it. If we do, there's a 4-0 approval to do it. And we think it's a great plan. And thank you for it.
And I'll follow, make a motion.
Stefan, thank you so much for doing that.
And I'll make a motion at the October meeting.
No, this is done.
Done.
Yeah, we're done.
Well, you want to make a motion, Tim, you have to make a motion.
Is there a document where we need to make a motion or it's not making a motion?
Well, that's, no, that should just record it.
Okay.
If you're going to spend, you probably have it in print somewhere. Usually it's a couple hundred dollars or something. If you're going to spend less than a couple hundred dollars, it's considered petty cash. It doesn't need a motion.
So we can just say, make a motion to spend on the park?
If you're going to go over $200, $250 or something like that.
Well, like, I mean, to put another little trees here by the other trees, it's going to be more $100.
Yeah, we, there's a lot of things we don't make motions for.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there's some things that I, that I do, because, you know what I mean?
What was that for me?
That petty cash. We're only going to be spending money.
Well, no, I, I mean...
Yeah.
We should make, we should make a motion for this, because that, for this one. I just would say that we...
So you're going to proceed with that if funding is available by the end of October?
If funding is available. So you'll leave it like that with the caveat.
That's fine.
So should I do it? So I'll make, I'll make a motion to do the planning at the, at Crossham Park if money is available by the end of October. And can I have a vote on that?
I'll second that. I'll second that. I'll second that motion. If there's any other discussion, then you can ask for a vote.
All in favor, say aye. And opposed, say nay. All right, so motion carries 4-0. And we're not going to do anything for the trees, because we'll look at that as this normal stuff. So that's, unless you want to motion for the trees, then we can do that.
I have no idea. I'll turn it across.
If you have, if you have, if you already have, no, I'm not, as a public, just as a general public board thing, if you have a board already making a motion to do something and someone said, well, let's make a little tiny change here, and it's insignificant, it doesn't change, you don't need a motion. If, and generally, people consider by the amount of money. If you're spending $1,000, if you're going to change the scope of the project by $1,000, it should be a motion.
Okay, so then we should make a motion for the trees?
We've never done it.
We've never done it. So we do a lot of spending.
And there are price on that. And that, I mean, that's, that's major.
And the other thing, we're going to get a price from somebody else as well. If it's completely out of whack or worse than the one we have, I think we should talk about it. So...
Okay, so we're not going to be?
No, no, no.
No, we're not.
We're not ready for that.
I will, I will follow up.
We've already made the motion to do it with the caveat that the money has to be available.
Right, but I'm talking about the other trees.
Well, Stefan's, Stefan's got a...
We're not ready for that.
Well, you're going to get a price on that, so that, yeah.
That's further under it.
Thank you for so much.
Before you...
Public comment?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, yeah, forgot.
And so this, this, all this talking about trees got me thinking. So after the last supervisor's meeting, I got an email from Dave Gallagher, and Dave Gallagher said to me, can you recommend somebody who can, wait, actually, it's too far a question. Can you recommend somebody who could, you know, give me advice on, you know, the, when the handout comes to pass down on my trees? And so you know a little bit about this, because it came to me back to you. What the, you know, is there somebody that I can talk to? And I, and I drew a total blank, because I really don't have, you know, most of my stuff, I've all over the internet or you can see. But I knew Stefan had done all this work here. And so I suggested to Dave that he did a touch of view. And then I wrote to John, Joan, and John basically said the same thing. And the other part of this question had more to do with somebody who could advise on, you know, driveway layout if it makes sense or something like that. And we know that going forward, there's going to be a lot of work on 896. And it's quite possible that this is going to be a recurring question for various residents. And so I thought that if the township could perhaps identify a number of people that could be contacted. I know we get into a recommendation issue here, which is probably problematic.
I mean, because they, they would need an engineer or someone to design their driveway.
Right.
Because then you can get into stormwater and things like that. I mean, I, you know, the township can't, can't do that.
No, I'm going to say, but I don't know if there's, if, if, if we could just say, there are these half a dozen people in the township, and you could go talk to each one of them and see if one of them is somebody that you could work with in dealing with this, so that we're prepared. Because I don't want to see a situation where just recommending one person, that looks like a mysterious business.
Sure.
But it's no different than somebody would do if they were going out on, you know, the Landenberg Facebook page asking for recommendations, except that it just seemed to me that this is a service we could provide our residents who are going to have to deal with the disruption of their lives to a greater or lesser degree. Because especially when they're going to go in and they're going to do some mowing of the road, they're cutting a lot of trees. And so people would look at that. In some cases, they may just want to know, you know, is this estimate that PennDOT is giving me a reliable estimate for the value of my trees? It's nice if we had the ability to give them the name of somebody who could, you know, just sort of assure them that they would be given a fair estimate if they want to go out, you know, for the tree loss and replace it. So I don't know, because I'm always concerned when people come to me and say, well, it would be nice if the historical commission recommended people could do work on this and work on that. And it's like, I get nervous about that because, you know, it's like, that, you know, recommending individual is a problem. But if there were a group of reasonably well-respected people that said, well, these are the people that you might go talk to because we talked to them when we're talking about something, or something like that, you know, I'm not talking about recommending, as I said, one person, but just saying, these are people you might consider talking to, you might want to talk to all of the persons, see if they can give you the thinking you want and reason for it. And if there was somebody out there who was willing to just say, especially in terms of trees, you know, to say, yeah, that's a fair price, then they may find that that, you know, works well for them in terms of opening up and doing this recommendation.
Well, I don't have any recommendations.
You know, I don't, I don't know if it's doable, but I think it's something to think about. It's not something we need today because they were talking about starting in 2021.
All right, right. We can put it in the minutes and have something to think about. All right, so can now, now can we adjourn the meeting?
Uh, the public comment. Did you ask everybody to go?
There's no more public.